Good evening. It is now 6:10 on January 14th. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Sandwich Board of Appeals. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Appeals is comprised of five regular members and one alternate member. The Board of Appeals can have up to four alternate members. Any decision of this board requires a two-thirds vote. Two-thirds of five is four. If only four members vote, the vote would have to be unanimous. If five members vote, one member could dissent. This meeting is live and streamed on Sandwich Community Television's website and on Local Channel 9. The meeting is being recorded and will be available on the SCTV website at www.sandwichtv.org tomorrow. The Board asks that if anyone is recording this meeting, please notify myself. So noted, thank you. Can I make a, have a motion to approve the minutes of December 10th?
I move to approve the minutes as written from December 10th.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, before we get to old business, just a reminder, I'd appreciate it if anybody, whether it be an applicant or a member of the public who wants to speak on an item, please come up and speak clearly into the microphone so that the TV people can hear us. All right, first item on the agenda tonight is old business number 03-12, Brightside Lane Comprehensive Permit AVA Associates, Inc., for the purpose of requesting a modification to the comprehensive permit. Note, this is not a public meeting. The Board is determining if the request is a substantial or insubstantial modification. When we received this request from Brightside, we did defer to our town council, and she did make a comment and made letters in it. Has all the board members read Amy's comments?
Yes.
Okay. There's a couple of comment letters here in the file. Let me read those. First comment letter is from Paul Tilton, Director of Public Works. "The Engineering Department has reviewed the subject request and offers the following for the Board's consideration. Review of the site reveals that the solar canopy was constructed low to the ground over a drainage retention basement that serves as a primary disposal location for surface water runoff from a large portion of the development. It appears that the solar canopy, as configured, may impact vegetative cover of the retention basin, and is not clear how maintenance of the retention basin may be performed—sediment, removal, repairs, regrading, etc. It is recommended that the applicant's engineer confirm with the Board that the retention basin can be expected to continue to perform as designed, how the solar canopy may or may not affect maintenance procedures, and what changes to the facility or maintenance procedures may be needed to ensure continued performance of the drainage system." And that was Paul, Sam Jensen was co-author of that memo. From Brendan Brides, Building Director, Building Commissioner. "When reviewing the final as-built plan, it became apparent that the fence was located closer to the solar array than what was originally approved. The applicant was informed that a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals would be necessary." And that is that. Any comment from yourself, Leanne, or from Sam? Any comment at all?
Just what I had stated in the memorandum, that on the site inspection, we had observed that the solar canopy was somewhat lower than we were expecting, and it's just not clear how the maintenance of the retention basin may be performed.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Fitch, you're up.
Thank you. Members of the panel, my name is John Fitch. I appear tonight for AVA Associates, and as well, I appear for all the owners at the Brightside Lane condominium to request that you find that the, a minor change in the location of certain structures would be an insubstantial change to the overall project. To address for just a second, out of order, Mr. Tilton's comments regarding the function of the drainage system. That was all discussed and resolved, and it would be, it's going to be by hand, of course, but the, these two uses are very compatible, and the permit to allow the use in the first place was issued, I think, 2019. So we believe that that is fully under control and was thoroughly vetted earlier. By way of background, if I may, Brightside Lane was created by a Chapter 40B comprehensive permit back in 2012. It's governed by Chapter 40B, Rules and Regulations. The original business plan for Brightside was for me and my wife and another couple to do well while doing good at the same time. I like to think of myself as a housing advocate who favors the private sector solutions over public sector, and the whole Brightside proposal felt good. Construction has been slow, but we now have a 33-unit neighborhood that includes nine affordable units. It is a high-quality, clean, good-looking, livable neighborhood that offers small-sized housing otherwise in short supply. The market rate units are the least expensive new housing available in town. Construction materials are low-maintenance wherever possible. We have central air, fire sprinkler systems, on-demand hot water, the best insulation, and now we use heat pumps. Every management decision has been guided by the goal of keeping expenses down while supporting quality of life. The current monthly condominium fee for an affordable unit, for example, is $70. Now, the flip side of that is that at Brightside, you have to go to the dump yourself. You don't have a dumpster. In 2019, we negotiated to add a solar energy production to the neighborhood. This was in the belief that solar power would be the future for us. We saw a facility as infrastructure to provide EV stations currently and provide power to our homes in the future. We asked this Board for approval for a facility of less than 250 KW as an insubstantial change to our site plan. Setbacks on our westerly boundary were right at the 10-foot minimum. You agreed the array was an insubstantial change and approved our proposal. It will take another 20 or 25 years, but eventually, the condo association will actually own the array, and the EV stations are available any time. Fast forward from 2019, and after seemingly endless delays with ever-source financing and supply-chain materials, the installation is complete, and we have discovered a small violation of the approved site plan as to location of some of the structures. The as-built plan, which we're asking to be the change, reveals a setback of 4 point, or excuse me, 9.4 feet to 9.5 feet instead of the 10 feet along this westerly boundary. The panels cannot be moved on their frames, and they cannot be cut. The violation is essentially six inches. It is behind a chain-link fence with slats. It is lower than the height of the fence, and it cannot be seen. We are in need of relief from this panel, and our petition, on our petition, our petition to the Board, excuse me, is brought under the provisions of Chapter 40B, which are different from those of 40A, and will, allows you to examine the requested change and decide whether it is substantial or insubstantial. We respectfully ask your support for this. And this is the point where the law now takes center stage. Those are the facts. I saw town council's memo, and I know it's rare, but Amy and I agree. The rules... Let's see. Excuse me, I meant to give you that. The first two pages there are the site plan as originally approved, and secondly, the as-built plan, which shows where the violation takes place. The third page is the way Chapter 40B... Let's see, I'm sorry. Third page? Yeah, the third page, where I've drawn the arrows in Section 11 there, talks about what the applicant should do if there are going to be changes to the program. And the idea is to submit the change and ask the Board if it is insubstantial or substantial, and if insubstantial, it would be approved. There was a 20-day period on that, and I talked with Amy, and of course waived that so that that's not a part of this procedure. It is strictly requesting you to decide whether substantial or insubstantial. But now, the last page there, again where I set the arrow, is part of the 40B regulations that talks about examples of what substantial or insubstantial might be. And you see, none of those, of course, deal with the specific set of facts before you tonight, but it's nice that they do provide some guidance. I have two arguments to make. The requested change is to the extent of six inches, .5 to .7 of a foot. In context, when you look at the Brightside site plan, it is almost 10 acres, and this is a very minor number in that context, so that if you look at it, you can easily say this is, it's not substantial, so thus it would be insubstantial. Substantial is a relative term, and they don't define it exactly, and even the dictionary isn't going to help you to pinpoint it, but it has to be looked at in context. So in the context of the site, of the Brightside housing project, it is a very small number and would be, should be considered insubstantial. The second argument, though, I make is a little more legal and common sense, and it relies on that fourth page that I gave you, and the section that talks about examples of what substantial or insubstantial might be. The common thread that runs through all these examples is the 10%. If you notice, that increases that exceed 10% are considered substantial. Increases in their examples that are less than 10% are identified as insubstantial. If you look at the request we're making tonight, it's about this setback within our own property, about the setback for the array, and we had approved, you had approved 10%, 10 feet, and that is the setback. 9.4 or 9.5 is less than a 10% request. And I think, consistent with the way that the regulations approach any change, that where our request is less than 10% of 10 feet, that it is logical and a lawful exercise to say that it, or come to the conclusion that it is insubstantial. And so, that is, that's our request. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any member of the Board have any questions to the applicant?
One of the facts you stated was the cost to correct this was being prohibitive, and I'm assuming that this was the fault of the engineer or the contractor?
This is an error.
Yes.
This is, I mean, there was no intention. Nobody benefits by it.
I understand. So my question is, was it, isn't it incumbent upon them to remedy this error?
You mean in a strictly legal sense?
Financial sense, yes.
I suppose you could make that argument.
So you haven't made that argument to the folks who made this mistake prior to coming here?
No. The costs involved in moving these things would be in excess of $100,000.
And how much of the area has to move the entire length?
I'm sorry?
How much of this area has to move the entire length of the field or portion?
It looks, it's a straight line, and it varies from .5, .7. Yes. This was an error, an unintentional error. The panels generally are, come in different sizes, don't they? May I ask my, my construction person? This is Fran Pettipet, and he was...
My name is Fran Pettipet.
Project manager.
I'm with Infusion, we're the project manager for the site. So to address your question, panels do come in different sizes, but this is an array, so all of those little squares are basically connected to poles in the ground, and if you move one post, you've got to move the entire array over. So $100,000 over 100 is probably underestimating whatever the cost is. It would just be cost prohibitive.
If they were all small and individual and on an independent post, why not just move one?
They're not an independent post. They're on, so there's columns, and then there's perls, and they're all on perls.
So everything's interconnected?
Yeah.
You got a different size panel? That's where you're going, Kevin, right? Can the one on the end be a different size to give you the six inches back?
No, they're basically all like the same size that are going to fit within the array. If not, that we're going to gain that much, they're all like about, basically 4x8, she's applied with them. So you might gain a couple of inches, and they're going to be four or five inches shorter. I don't know that for a fact, quite honestly, so I haven't sized them up, but all of our panels that we use in that range, have to keep consistent with management and the site software, this will be maintained for 20 years, 25.
Any other questions, comments?
Just to address Sam's comments, can you, I think you said you had, elaborate on that regarding the drainage?
The drainage is fully functional underneath and will be, will be maintained by hand.
So there'll be no real substantial changes to...
Oh, absolutely not. The basin is there, and this has been in place now for a couple of years, actually, just not completed, and it's all functioning just fine.
And does the condo association have a contract with somebody to maintain those basins? I know that typically, when we did the Stop and Shop project down on Katuah Road many, many moons ago, that one of the things that the Board required back then was that there be some kind of a contract with somebody to maintain those, because typically, they ended up being a mess. You know, everything was growing in every different direction, nothing was being maintained. So is there a contract with someone to maintain those areas?
There is not. The association has, has, on an as-needed basis, but frankly, it's all been functioning fine for 15, 12 years. But if there were a need, we would hire, we would hire a contractor to fix it.
So, but John, it's part of our maintenance for our system. We don't want any overgrowth. We want it to be easily worked on, so we're going to be maintaining inside of the array to make sure it doesn't get overgrown.
Now, just, my question is, the letter from Paul and Sam was January 8th, and they're looking for something more from you people than just, hey, it works fine. That's my understanding?
Correct. I would suggest that the applicant's civil engineer weigh in on that and provide their recommendation as to whether or not it can continue to perform. It is, my understanding is that it's a, it was approved as a vegetated retention basin originally, going back to the original permitting for Brightside Lane, so that would require vegetative cover. If that were to change, we would just want verification from an engineer that with, if the cover were not going to be present, it would continue to operate as needed and as the state of performance was provided. And then also, I think we all want the same thing here.
Mm-hmm. I mean, there's absolutely no, no interest in not having this basin function, and we've, we've assured ourselves.
Well, I just think, I think the Engineering Department's just looking for something in writing from your engineers, saying, from my professional standpoint, we feel this is fully functional, and this is what we're going to do to maintain it.
May I suggest, I completely agree.
Perfect.
If I, if I could suggest that in conjunction with perhaps a vote on the question of whether something is substantial or insubstantial, that, that a condition be imposed, that we submit engineering to verify that the basin will function as designed, because that's essential to, to the condominium as well.
I understand.
And, and we've had, we've received assurances that it would.
Okay.
But I'd be happy to, happy to document that professionally with an engineer.
Okay.
As a condition.
Anybody else?
I mean, my recollection was that typically, something of this nature was always considered to be de minimis. So then, a six-inch, a six-inch change really, in my opinion, is de minimis and...
Okay. All right. So we'll, if there's no further discussion, we'll have to make a motion to take it under advisement or...
It doesn't need to be a motion.
Okay, so we'll just...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Brendan, I'm sorry.
So I did review the as-built, and it was just a minor six-inch change. We haven't received a profile as-built as of yet. A lot of the array was, was proposed to be at 10 feet, anywhere from 10 feet to 11.2 feet, and coming back up at the, at the edges to about three feet. We haven't received anything yet to show what the height of that is, and the reason I bring that up is that there's a note here that says, concrete piers, so the, like a sonotube pier where the supports are set, concrete piers at each, at each post greater than seven feet above grade. We just were never called for any concrete inspections out there at all, so the assumption would be that everything is below seven feet. That being the case, that's not what was presented to us originally. I mean, that's something we can review at the, at the profile as-built when we get it, but...
Although, if there's building code regulations on that, of course we'd...
We, we're just, I'm just saying, what was presented to us, what we, what we approved was presented to us. Go through the chairman's here.
Excuse me again, my name is Fran Pettipet with Infusion. The piers were all driven into the ground.
Concrete?
No, concrete.
Yeah. Okay. It says concrete pier.
They were all hammered into the ground with a big machine. We were there for days.
Right. No, I'm just telling you what it says here.
Okay.
What was approved.
And that was on our building plan?
Yeah. The plan that you presented to the Building Department that was then approved for construction.
Well, I think they should, that has to be separated, that has to be resolved, but that's a separate issue than, than what's before the Board tonight.
So you resolve that with the Building Department?
But, yes.
Okay, all right. So we move forward?
I'll make the motion that we deem this request to be insubstantial.
Okay, I agree.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I will deal with Sam, and we'll deal with Brendan as well.
All right. All right, let's see. All right, next item on the agenda is new business, 24-24, 12 Freeman Avenue, Special Permit Repurpose Construction LLC, Stephen Sui, for the purpose of constructing a single-family dwelling in the Flood Plain. Read the public hearing notice, here we go. "Sandwich Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on the application of Paul Pachi, property owner and repurpose construction LLC, Stephen Sui, applicant, for the, for a special permit under Section 4350 of Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaw for property located at 12 Freeman Ave, Sandwich, Mass., Assessors Map Number 94, Parcel Number 063, for the purpose of constructing a new dwelling in the Flood Plain. The public hearing will be held on January 14th, 2025, at the Sandhill School Community Center, 16 Dewey Ave, Sandwich, Mass. at 6:00 PM. The public record information can be viewed at the Planning and Development Office." We have some comment letters here.
Do you have a motion to open, okay, 24-25?
I'm sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Got ahead of myself. The first comment memo is from Dave DiCanto, Director of Department of Natural Resources. "The Conservation Commission has reviewed the request for special permit number 24-24, 12 Freeman Avenue, Sandwich, Mass. The applicant/owner has filed a notice of intent with the Commission for this project, which is scheduled to be heard on December 4th, 2024. Conservation Commission meeting. A copy of the notice of intent application is attached. The Commission will be happy to send a copy of the decision. Order of conditions as soon as it is issued." Okay.
I don't think you need to read that.
I didn't think so.
Oh, that's a copy.
That's all right, yep. I can't find Heather's note here. Here with me. Here's the butters list. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Here it is, at the very end, of course. We have a comment letter for Heather Galant from Board of Health. "12 Freeman Avenue, stormwater infiltration system must meet Title V requirements, setbacks, etc. Proposed septic system must meet Title V requirements. Not all pertinent setbacks are shown on the site plan and will need to be shown on the septic design plans. Board of Health hearing may be required." We have another comment letter from Brendan Brides, the Building Commissioner. "Based on the documentation supplied, it would appear that the..." Based on the documentation supplied, it would appear that the applicant is proposing the introduction of engineered fill in order to lift the property out of the floodplain. Is this, if this is what is being sought, to approve this condition, the building department would first require a LOMAR dash F from FEMA for the introduction of the fill. The amount of fill that is being proposed is quite substantial. Currently, this department deals with a considerable number of water runoff complaints from property owners in the general town neck area due to grade changes being made by abutting neighbors. The proposed grade change has potential to create a serious runoff problem. This department will require a detailed engineered plan to deal with water runoff from this property, showing how the potential problem will be addressed. The plan should be stamped by an engineer and not be marked for permit only, not for construction, as the plan that has been submitted with the CBA application. A certi- certificate of occupancy will not be issued until this department is convinced that the change in grade will not be detrimental to abutting neighbors by causing water runoff. And, uh, we have a memo from Paul Tilton and Sam Jensen from the Engineering Department. The Engineering Department has reviewed the subject request and offers the following for the board's consideration. Erosion controls should be provided and maintained until final site stabilization is achieved. Stormwater treatment best management practices are present in the street, uh, to the site. These, uh, these were installed at considerable expense to treat runoff and address water quality issues impacting shell fishing and swimming areas. These systems are vulnerable to sediment clogging. Protection during construction with proper erosion and sedimentation controls is imperative. The proposed plan includes private subsurface drainage facilities on the site to mitigate impacts from the proposed site alterations. Proper maintenance of these systems will be essential for their long-term operation. It is recommended that the applicant's engineer submit an inspection and maintenance plan for these facilities. Number three, a driveway permit from the Department of Public Works will be required, be required prior to construction. This is the, we have a letter from Jennifer Rysig, Chairman of the, uh, Planning Board. The Planning Board has reviewed and discussed the application for the permit, special permit number twenty-four dash twenty-four at twelve Freeman Avenue, and respectfully requests the Board of Appeals evaluate the change in topography and its potential, potential effect on surrounding properties, and require engineered plans showing sufficient drainage. And that is it for comments. Let's see. All right. Can I have a motion to, uh, open a public hearing?
We did that already.
We did that already, on this one? I read the comments. Brendan, Leanne, have any comments?
Um, not really, just, um, the, the, this lot straddles, um, the VE zone, elevation sixteen, and the AE zone, elevation eighteen, elevation fourteen. They are building all within the AE zone, otherwise they wouldn't be allowed to bring fill into a velocity zone. Um, it just straddles the, the top portion of the property. Um, since, um, Dave DeCanto has submitted his memo, they have received their order of conditions, which is one of the requirements for a special permit in the floodplain. So, everything's all set there.
Okay. Brendan?
Um, just, my assumption was that they, uh, the intention was to, to bring in fill and build on the fill. The applicant, um, submitted, uh, TB-ten, Technical Bulletin Ten, from FEMA, which basically ensures that, uh, structures built on fill in or near a flood zone are reasonably safe from flooding, so the assumption was that they were building on fill. I'm not sure if that's the intention or not, but we can find out.
All right. Well, uh, we'll hear from, uh, Steve Suie next.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Steve Suie from Repurpose Construction. Um, and the project, these are, there's two projects will be, um, up next as well, twelve and fourteen Freeman Ave. Both of them are pretty much the same house. Uh, we're looking to do the same thing with both lots. These two lots happen to be, um, both abutting lots that did bring in fill at some point, so these two lots are kind of down in a hole right now, and we're looking to bring in fill to kind of match the grade, um, with the other two lots on either side. As part of that, we're, we're proposing to do swales around the, the property itself to keep the water on the property. We have, uh, some pretty substantial, um, drainage structures that are going to be going in, um, along the, um, right side of both properties. There is a, um, stormwater, um, underground structure that will, um, maintain most of the water coming on the site. There's also a French drain proposed for the, the front of the, the both lots that will take the water runoff of the road, direct it away from the road, and do another drainage structure in the front right corner. And we also have a catch basin that will be in the back, um, right corner of the lots where the swales going around the house will empty into, and that will go to the drainage structure on the, the right-hand side as well. So, by doing that, it, it, um, really reduces the current stormwater runoff on the lot. I think it's by seventy-something percent, um, from the, the current conditions. Fill was really to just kind of bring up grade, so everything's not continually dumping onto, to these lots.
Gotcha.
And right now, actually, the, the neighbor on the, the left-hand side actually has his gutter drainage piped right onto fourteen Freeman.
All right. Any member of the board have questions for the applicant?
I have a quick question. What section of the bylaw was the special permit filed for? Forty-three fifty, or?
Forty-three fifty.
Is there a need for, for a special permit under section forty-two hundred as well? Don't really know, because I don't know the cubic yards that are being proposed, but if you're placing more than two hundred cubic yards in the tiering on a site, you may also need special permit under section forty-two hundred, the general earth moving regulations.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I think we did ask, uh, what the, the amount of fill would be, and I don't think we got a cubic yard answer. I think it was more cup of feet, two feet, or something.
Um, there's a provision within the floodplain bylaws in forty-three fifty that discuss the introduction of fill, and that any fill in a floodplain must contain a special permit. Um, so we just allowed it to be filed under that section alone. We did not get a cubic yard for fill. We received a two, to two-point-five feet of fill for both properties.
Mr. Suie, you, can you provide a cubic?
Um, yeah. I can give you a rough estimate now, but we can have the engineer.
As rough as you can, closest you can get?
Yeah. So. Um, roughly, it's probably going to be about six hundred and fifty yards, is what we're thinking.
For each lot? Oh, that doesn't, I mean, this one is only, for this one, I get it.
So, based on the elevations of this lot and the lot to the west, looks like you're trying to raise it about two feet? Is that about right?
Correct. To kind of match, yeah.
And is it going to slope downward towards the rear of the lot, like the other, the other lot does?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. The, the back of the lot is, is, there's really not much fill going beyond the, the house location.
Beyond the what location?
Beyond, beyond the proposed house location. It drops back down, which brings all, you know, the water to that, that drainage in the back corner there.
Any other questions for member of the board?
What was your lot coverage? If I missed that, forgive me, but I.
Um.
Well, I'm sorry. Mr. Suie.
Yeah, I, I don't have that right.
Does maximum lot coverage, twenty-five percent? Uh, if that's the bylaw?
That's the, that's the, yeah.
Yeah?
Allowable. Is there a square footage of the? Yeah. Structure somewhere? I just didn't.
It's in your obituary.
I think the message probably should be on your film.
I saw it. Somewhere in the list, six, the original was at five something, and this was going in.
I think the proposed house was, uh, eleven hundred and fifty square feet.
Sounds about right.
And it's a five thousand square foot lot, so.
Twelve fifty, a little bit.
All right. So, we go root that? Is that?
Yeah.
Do you have the footage? Yeah, is it?
Yeah, that sounds about right. Yeah, about, it's about twenty percent.
Is that, are you at eleven fifty as proposed? Square footage?
Uh, it looked, tough to read off this, but it looked very close to that, yes. If anything, we're slightly under that, but.
Okay. Thank you.
I would think that as a condition, that they probably should put that information on their plan.
Yeah. It will be on the final plan.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Any, any member of the public, or anybody in the audience wish to speak to this special permit? All right. Motion to close?
Uh, just one question.
Wait a minute, just, go ahead.
Does square footage cover that the entirety of this, including the, the deck and porch?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'll move them. We close and take it under advisement?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up is. Fourteen Freeman. Next up is, uh, number twelve, uh, excuse me, number twenty-four dash twenty-five, fourteen Freeman Ave., Special Permit Repurpose Construction LLC, Stephen Suie, for the purpose of constructing a single-family dwelling in the floodplain. The Sandwich Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on the application of Robert Pakel, property owner and Repurpose Construction LLC, Stephen Suie, applicant, for a special permit under section forty-three fifty of the Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaw for property located at fourteen Freeman Ave., Sandwich, Mass., assessors map number ninety-four, parcel sixty-two, for the purpose of constructing a new dwelling in the floodplain. The public hearing will be held on January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at the Sand Hill School Community Center, sixteen Dewey Ave., Sandwich, Mass., at six P.M. The public record information can be viewed at the Planning and Development Office. Can I have a motion to open the public meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have a couple of comments. First is, uh, from Dave DeCanto, Department of Natural Resources. Conservation Commission has reviewed the request for special permit number twenty-four dash twenty-five, fourteen Freeman Ave., Sandwich, Mass. The applicant slash owner has filed a notice of intent with the commission for this project, which is scheduled to be heard on December fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Conservation Commission meeting. A copy of the notice of intent application is attached. The commission will be happy to send a copy of this decision. Order of conditions as soon as it is issued.
Send the order of conditions.
Yeah. No, I know there's something buried back here. Okay, and we have, again, a comment from Heller Galant, uh, from the Health Department. Fourteen Freeman Ave., uh, stormwater infiltration system must meet Title V requirements, setbacks, et cetera. Proposed septic system must meet Title V requirements. Not all pertinent setbacks are shown on the site plan and will need to be shown on the septic design plans. A Board of Health hearing may be required. Brendan Brides, Building Commissioner. Comments would be the same as submitted for the application at twelve Freeman Ave., Technical Bullet number ten, has also been submitted with this application. To elevate a property out of a floodzone, require a LOMAR dash F from the FEMA. Uh, the last one is, uh, from Paul Tilton and Sam Jensen. The Engineering Department has reviewed the subject request and offers the following for the board's consideration. First, erosion controls should be provided and maintained until final site stabilization is achieved. Stormwater treatment best management practices are present in the street adjacent to the site. These are installed at considerable expense to treat runoff and address water quality issues impacting shell fishing and swimming areas. These systems are vulnerable, vulnerable to sediment clogging. Protection during construction with proper erosion and sedimentation controls is imperative. Two, the proposed plan includes private subsurface drainage facilities on the site to mitigate impacts from the proposed site alterations. Proper maintenance of these systems will be essential for their long-term operation. It is recommended that the applicant's engineer submit an inspection and maintenance plan for these facilities. A driveway permit from the Department of Public Works will be required prior to construction. And, again, from the Planning Board, Jennifer Rysig. The Planning Board has reviewed and discussed the application for special permit number twenty-four dash twenty-five at fourteen Freeman Avenue, and respectfully requests the Board of Appeals evaluate the change in topography and its potential effect on surrounding properties, and require engineered plans showing sufficient drainage. And I think that will do it. Yes, that'll do it. Motion to open the public hearing?
We did that.
We did that already? Okay. Comments from Brendan or Leanne? Mr. Suie, any, any further comment?
Um, just, uh, one other thing, just to address the, the drainage. Um, we will have a, um, a maintenance, um, program and everything written up by the engineer that will be submitting with, with the, uh, the building permit application and everything.
Okay. The board have any questions?
I assume that this property required Conservation Commission approval like the other one did?
Yes. Yep.
And did it get its approval?
Yes. Yeah, they, um, actually loved the plan.
Similar to fill as the other lot?
Yes.
Less than a thousand?
Yeah.
Keep it, okay?
This building footprint looks bigger. Do you know?
Same size. Yeah, the, the houses are identical.
Right there, I think you'll get it. That's the old footprint.
Okay. All right. Any member of the public have any questions, or want to address anything in regard to this permit? So, no? So, no further discussion? Can I take a motion to, uh, close?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome. All right. The next special permit is number twenty-four dash twenty-six twenty-two Knot Avenue. Special permit Shay for the purpose of installing a fence exceeding six feet. Read the public into the notice. The Sandwich Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on the application of Mark Shay, applicant and Mary and Mary Shay, property owners for a special permit under section thirty-five sixty of the Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaw for property located at twenty-two Knot Ave, Sandwich, Mass. Assessors map number ninety-three, parcel number thirty-one, for the purpose of installing a fence exceeding six feet. The public hearing will be held on January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five at the Sand Hill Community School Center sixteen Dewey Ave, Sandwich, Mass. At six P M. The public record information can be viewed at the Planning and Development Office.
You want to go open?
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have a comment letter here from Brendan Brides. Approval from the Historic District Committee will be required. Application as presented does not appear to hinder any sight line for motorists. And that is it for comment letters. Brendan, Leanne, any comments from either of you?
Just to note that the applicant has received their approval from the Historic District Committee.
Okay.
How tall is the fence going to be? Seven feet?
Uh, seven feet. And then on the last two panels on the side, it slopes down to four feet.
So I'm, I just opened it up to you, is that the only comment you want to make?
If I can get out of here quick, or yes?
You don't like watching paint dry? Uh, any other members of the board have any questions?
Do you just want to tell us why you would like a seven-foot fence?
Sure. So town neck area, there's lots of freely spa there and, you know, I'm lucky enough to have a double lot. Right now, on the right side of the house, I have agaveitis going down each side and then on the back, I have Leland cypresses. They've all been diseased and had wind damage, so I want to remove those and put up a fence, I think, longer term, as we get older, that's be lower maintenance for us and gain us not as much privacy, but some privacy from, you know, the neighbors.
Any other questions from the board? Anybody from the public wish to speak to this special permit or have any questions? I see none.
Now move and close.
Okay.
Take it under advisement?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're good to go.
Thank you.
All right. The next application will be number twenty-four dash twenty-seven eighty-five Route six A for Variance Community Health Center of Cape Cod Inc. For the purpose of a reduction in the required side yard setback. Sandwich Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on the application of Community Health Center of Cape Cod Inc., applicant and the Cape Cod Five Cent Savings Bank property owner for Variance under section twenty-six hundred I of the Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaw for property located at eighty-five Route six A, Sandwich, Mass. Assessors map number eighty-seven, parcel number seventy-seven, for the purpose of a reduction in required side yard setback. The public hearing will be held on January fourth, two thousand twenty-five at the Sand Hill School Community Center sixteen Dewey Ave, Sandwich, Mass. At six P M. Public record information can be viewed at the Planning and Development Office. Okay, comments from Dave DiCanto, Department of Natural Resources. Conservation? Oh, I keep forgetting that.
Motion open hearing twenty-four twenty-seven. Public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll get it down by the end of the night. The Conservation Commission comments for the, for eighty-five Route six A Sandwich Mass. It appears that this project was in the juris, within the jurisdiction of the commission under the Wetlands Protection Act and the Town of Sandwich Wetland Bylaws and must file with the commission for approval. Okay, and we have one from Brendan Brides, Building Commissioner. A setback variance is required based on the proposed proximity of the building relative to the side lot line in accordance with footnote I of section twenty-six hundred of the bylaw. Because the proposed project abuts a residential area, the footnote requires a twenty-foot side yard setback. The applicant is proposing an eleven point, eleven foot, two-inch setback. With regard to the special permit, clarity should be sought as to whether the requested reduction in parking to fifty-eight spaces includes the required four spaces for the two proposed dwelling units. The suggested required parking of sixty-six spaces would equate to a total occupancy of one hundred ninety-eight for the entire building. Okay. And that is it for comments. All right, London, or Brendan, Leanne, any comment from either of you?
Um, just regarding the parking, there was a, a little ambiguity there initially, but the applicant's request for relief in parking stands, I believe it's, we went over it with Greg and, um, the, I missed, I misinterpreted what the use was going to be and I may have given a number that was less than what they actually need, so their application stands as it is for, for the parking relief.
Okay. Eliza, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Eliza Cox. I'm an attorney at Nutter, McLennan and Fish and I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant and I'll introduce our team with me in just a moment. I did want to briefly ask two procedural questions before I get into the substance of the application. The first is obviously there's four of you here tonight, so it's not a, a full board. What I'd like to do, if the board is amenable, is proceed this evening, get any feedback if there's any hesitation from a board member. I would ask that the matter be continued so that the missing member could mullens in and participate in a subsequent hearing when a vote would be taken. So that's my first request. The second procedural matter that I wanted to suggest is that we have a PowerPoint presentation that sort of provides an overview of the site and the project that's really relevant to both applications, the variance and the special permit. So I wanted to see if the board would entertain opening both public hearings so that this testimony is applicable to both. And then we will need ultimately, whether it's tonight or at a continued hearing, a vote on the variance first because that affects the number of parking spaces that are associated with the plan, which is one of the reliefs that we've requested by special permit. So my, my suggestion is that we open both public hearings and then proceed and then we can have a discussion after I present the applications.
Your thoughts, Leanne?
Yeah, we've done that before.
Okay, so we'll open the other one, we'll open the special permit as well? Okay. The next item is number twenty-four dash seventeen eighty-five Route six A special permit, Community Health Center of Cape Cod Inc., for the purpose of construction, constructing a two-story community health center with two apartments, reduced parking and onsite wastewater disposal. The Sandwich Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on the application of Community Health Center of Cape Cod Inc., applicant and the Cape Cod Five Cent Savings Bank property owner for a special permit under sections thirty-one ten, thirty-four thirty-one and twenty-five forty C of the Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaw for property located at eighty-five Route six A, Sandwich, Mass. Mass Assessors Map number eighty-seven, parcel number seventy-seven, for the purpose of constructing a two-story community health center with two apartments, reduced parking and onsite water dis, wastewater disposal. The public hearing will be held on January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five at the Sand Hill Community School Center sixteen Dewey Ave, Sandwich, Mass. At six P M. The public record information can be viewed at the Planning and Development Office. Make a motion to open?
Motion open public hearing on twenty-four seventeen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first comment letter on this one is from Dave DiCanto. The Conservation Commission has reviewed the request for special permit twenty-four dash seventeen eighty-five six A, six, Sandwich, Mass. The applicant owner is reminded that this project is within the hundred-foot jurisdictional buffer to a wetland across six A under the Mass Wetlands Protection Act and the Sandwich Wetlands Bylaw and must file with the commission. Uh, we have another comment from Sam Jensen, the Engineering Department. A couple of comments. It is recommended that the applicant provide an inspection and maintenance plan detailing procedures to ensure long-term function of the drainage facilities. It is recommended that erosion and sedimentation controls be required prior to site disturbance and through construction until final site stabilization is achieved to protect down gradient facilities. And from Brendan Brides, the Building Commissioner. A setback variance is required based on the proposed proximity of the building relative to the side lot line in accordance with footnote I of section twenty-six hundred of the bylaw. Because the proposed project abuts a residential area, the footnote requires a twenty-foot side yard setback. The application is proposing eleven feet, two-inch setback. With regard to the special permit, clarity should be sought as to whether the requested reduction in parking to fifty-eight spaces includes the required four spaces for the two proposed dwelling units. The suggested required parking of sixty-six spaces would equate to a total occupancy of one hundred ninety-eight for the whole building, or the entire building. From Paul Tilton. I read through the, the Cape Cod Commission comments and, or the CCC comments and noted the required transportation findings and conditions as part of this project shown below. It's good to see the proposed development is sharing the driveway with Cape Cod Five and proposing mitigation at two intersections. I don't know what we can require per our purview as it relates to the Cape Cod Commission conditions, but I offer the following comment related to the traffic impact slash improvements for this project. The Town of Sandwich is interested in providing input related to the Cape Cod Commission's Development of Regional Impact Decision dated December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four for the Sandwich Community Health Center, Cape Cod Commission File Number twenty-four zero two zero. Specifically, the Cape Cod Commission's decision references findings F sixty-one A and B and conditions C ten that require transportation mitigation at two intersections along Route six A at Tupper Road East and West. Improvements of these two intersections, particularly the Route six A at Tupper Road East intersection, have been a priority for Sandwich. The town has currently implemented bicycle signage and pedestrian improvements adjacent to this location and is currently working with Cape Cod Commission and Mastot on a shared use path, sup design that will travel through this intersection. Additional bike and pedestrian facilities to accommodate the future sup as well as pedestrian traffic from the newly opened municipal office building at one hundred Route six A will greatly enhance safety in this area. The town requests to be included in future transportation improvements, improvement discussion as part of the required mitigation to ensure consistently with town plans. Okay. And from Sandwich Fire Department, from Andrew Mandl. After looking at the plans, the Sandwich Fire Department had a couple of concerns. Understanding that the facility will leave sprinklers, they are not required to have secondary road access. This concern would, would be where the FD, the fire department would be, or the FTC would be located on the building because if it were in the corner where the sprinkler room is, we would run the risk of truck preventing any means of access or regress for other apparatus slash vehicles arriving on scene or leaving. For our run cards, the response would be engine one, engine two, and ladder three, with our ladder arriving last. We like to position the ladder in front of the building so as to have the best access to roof oper, roof operations without obstructions for ventilation purposes. We would not like to set up the ladder truck on six A due to traffic concerns and overhead wires and it would not ideally be able to set up in the Cape Cod Five parking lot. The concern for roof, roof operations comes from the building having solar panels and the fact that there are two apartments that will have occupants in the building, which poses a bigger life safety risk. I have attached the vehicle specs for our ladder truck. I also spoke to our mechanic about the turning radiuses for our apparatus, which seemed to be in line with the architect. We would also ask that the FTC be a five-inch storage connection as that is the baseline LDH hose we supply on our trucks. Thank you for all you do. Any questions, reach out. And this memo is from Mike Avila, Assistant Health Agent. This member, memorandum outlines the Health Department's comments regarding the special permit application with request for variance regarding the property located at eighty-five Route six A, Sandwich, Mass. In accordance with the Sandwich Board of Health Regulations, the proposed construction of a community health center will require connection to the Sandwich Water District Service as a ser, as service is available at this location. Facilities constructed on the property will require service by onsite waste systems in compliance with the Sandwich Board of Health Regulations and three-ten CMR fifteen, the State Environmental Code Title V. The proposed residential units must comply with one oh five CMR four-ten, State Sanitary Code Minimum Standards for Human Habitation, including but not limited to requirements for adequate ventilation, heating, sanitation, and emergency egress. The Community Health Center must implement a compliant system for the proper handling and disposal of medical and infectious waste in accordance with one oh five CMR four-eighty. This includes appropriate Sharps disposal and the management of hazardous biological materials. The facility must ensure compliance with the MGL Chapter one eleven, Section one twenty-two to prevent nuisances such as noises, or excuse me, noise, odors, and pest infections. The Health Department recommends the inclusion of a pest control plan and measures to prevent disruptions to surrounding properties as appropriate. I think that's it. Oh, excuse me. All right. All right. You're up again.
All right, thank you very much. Should I tell you when to switch slides? Okay, great. So we prepared a PowerPoint presentation that we're sort of going to tag team amongst the team members here and I'll kick it off if you want to go to the next slide. So to introduce who's here with me tonight, two seats to my left is Karen Gardner. She's the CEO of the Community Health Centers of Cape Cod Inc. On Karen's left is Greg Serunian from MedCom Architectural Group, who's the project architect. And then directly to my left is Joe Henderson, who is our engineer from Horsley Whiteman Group. What I was intending, or what we're intending to present tonight is first, I'm going to turn the speaking over to Karen to introduce you to the Community Health Centers if you're not familiar with the organization and talk, she'll talk about the organization and a little bit about their vision for the site. We'll talk about the subject property and the planning and programming. I'll tick off the other permits that we have gotten and/or will need to receive and then we'll get into the two zoning requests. Next slide. Good, so I'm going to turn it over to Karen, who's got a couple of slides to introduce you to the applicant. If you can hear me all right? Good evening, everyone. Great to see you. We're super excited about this project. I hope you, hope you can feel it. I'm not, I promise I won't read all of these slides this evening. I really appreciate the time and how long you've been here already. Our health center was organized as actually a free clinic about twenty-six years ago in nineteen ninety-seven and since that time, we've really grown from a free clinic to the state licensed clinic and now a federally qualified health center. And the real importance of the health center is that we provide access to healthcare services for everyone regardless of ability to pay. And we do that by providing a whole host of services under one roof. There's certainly a value that we've learned over time in providing very integrated, compassionate, culturally sensitive, language sensitive services, again, under one roof. So you can see the array that we're proposing, primary care, oral, access to oral health, walk-in care, not urgent care, but walk-in care, same-day access, addiction recovery services.
services in the way of counseling and medication, oral health, optometry, behavioral health. Again, I won't read all of these, and a very much a focus on health prevention and wellness. Our mission, you know, not to go back any slides, but our mission really is to improve the health of the community. It sounds a little corny, but that's what we're all about in making sure that it's done in an equitable way, again, with, for everyone regardless of the ability to pay. We have seven locations currently. You can see them there. We are currently in Sandwich, just across the street in six A from where this location's going to be. It's been very successful. It's a small clinic, a couple of counseling rooms, three exam rooms, and we're, we are busting at the seams. We're only able to have two providers there at any one given time, and we have a lot of demand for our services. I'm not sure that it's on the slide, but before I go into this, I'll just say that we, you know, since COVID, we've seen about a sixty-five percent increase in demand for services, and I'm sure I don't have to speak to anyone about the need for primary care in the region, in the nation, in the Commonwealth, and what have you. A little bit about our patient population, our demographics. So forty-seven percent of our patient base is below a hundred percent of the poverty level. Again, I'm sure you probably know, for one person, that's about an income of fifteen thousand dollars. So just very much a population of need. Eighty-one percent of our population is below two-hundred percent of the poverty level. So again, about a thirty-thousand-dollar income. And then you can see the insurance status. So individuals will come to the health center, about ten percent present at the health center without insurance. Part of what we do is help everyone gain access to insurance, gain access to a lot of other enabling services, but definitely insurance. So at the end of the day, about five percent are uninsured, a little over thirty-four percent are mass health Medicare, you can see, and private insurance. And I'll just say about the private insurance, it's about a fifty-fifty between pure private insurance that have incomes, traditional commercial payers, and half of that amount is subsidized health insurance through the connector. Just FYI. So we, through that uncompensated care, that no health insurance, we deliver about two-hundred and fifty worth of free care services to individuals, probably a little bit more when you consider that all of our services are available on a sliding scale basis, and we work with individuals where they are income-wise and what's going on with their particular situation. We also provide a number and a high amount of enabling services. So for us, that means helping individuals apply for health insurance, providing access to interpreters, and just, you know, it is always surprising to me how diverse the Cape really is and how our region really is. We probably, on any one given month, have between thirty and fifty different languages that we're serving, or dialects, I should say. And then helping individuals work on transportation, food assistance, housing assistance, all of those things that can reduce barriers to accessing healthcare and improving their health goals or their health outcomes. So our project, we think, is going to be about eight and a half million dollars. We were very, very fortunate that we received five million dollars from the Executive Office of Health and Human Services, and we competed for that grant opportunity. There are about forty applications. We were one of two that were selected, and that selection process was really based on need within the community that we served. And honestly, our track record of being able to meet the needs of the population and be sustainable in the long run. I don't think I missed anything there. We, oh, yeah, but we're going to raise the balance of that funding. We have raised about a million dollars of that so far. And then finally, about, this facility will provide access to at least twenty-three hundred new patients in addition to a total of five, not in addition to, but about capacity of about five thousand patients is what we're anticipating a little bit. I know we'll get into it probably in the diagrams, but a little bit about how the layout of the facility is, how many exam rooms and what we're including. So I didn't mention pharmacy before. I'll just say two words about that. We do have, this will be a public, a retail pharmacy, searching for that word, and so it will be open to the public regardless of whether you're a patient or not, but obviously the biggest benefit are the patients that we serve. We certainly have found that having a pharmacy on site, individuals are more apt to fill their prescriptions, and we're more apt to know if they are having problems filling their prescriptions. We don't want people to make decisions between filling prescriptions and paying rent or other other issues. So it's, that integration is super important. And then finally, the two housing units, which are really very small studio apartments that are really focused on what's said here, workforce, medical students, interns. We have a very robust intern and medical student program affiliated with Tufts and BU and Boston College and a number of other organizations.
So this slide shows you an overview of the property. It's obviously addressed eighty-five Route six A. Right now, it's about a four-point-eight acre, eight-four acre parcel. I put an X on it. This is the assessor's map where you can see the property shown. It's in the BL one zoning district. The site is owned, the entire site is owned by Cape Cod Five Savings Bank and is currently developed with about fifty-seven hundred square foot bank branch. And then on the right side of the property, which is sort of the subject premises for this application, there's an abandoned accessory barn structure on the property. You can see that there is an existing curb cut that services the bank on Route six A, which is to the bottom or south of the page, and then an internal driveway that connects the bank as well to Tupper Road connecting to the north. As part of this project, the Community Health Center will be working with the bank to acquire about a one-acre parcel, so the land will be divided with an approval-not-required plan. And then the one-acre parcel, which is roughly where encompasses where that abandoned barn is, and you'll see more detail of that in just a moment, is the property site that would be conveyed to the Community Health Center. The site environmentally has been historically cleared. It looks like there was a long time ago some kind of farming or agricultural operation on the site. Right now, it's pretty environmentally degraded. It's a lot of invasive species and sort of abandoned building and brush on the site. And I think the next few slides show a few photos of, actually, it will in just a moment. So this is a blow-up of the approximately one-acre parcel to the right side of the plan that is proposed to be conveyed to the applicant and developed for the property. Just to orient you, Route six A is at the bottom of this slide. I like this slide because it does show the topography that exists on the site. So if you look along the Route six A frontage, you'll see a lot of lines in close proximity. There is a steep drop from Route six A into the subject property. It's about ten feet, and this is the reason, as you'll see in the plans or have seen in the plans, one of the reasons why we're proposing to share the curb cut that exists with Cape Cod Five. It would be very difficult to construct a driveway and deal with that topography into the project site area. In addition, from a traffic flow and safety perspective, it's better to have the single curb cut which can accommodate both uses. You can also see on the westerly side of the property, sort of abutting the parking for the bank. Again, there's topography there. There's a steep drop of about six feet with the bank being at a higher elevation than the subject property. To the north, there's actually, to the south and the north, there are wetlands that are near the property. You can see the blue dotted lines show the sort of edge of wetland buffer area. And so the property, it slopes towards the north to the wetland that is on the bank property on the other side of that internal access drive that connects to Tupper Road. Just some photographs showing the condition of the site now. Next slide. So if you've had a chance to read the materials that we submitted, you'll have seen, we submitted two site plans and have gone all the permitting to date to get both of those site plans approved. And this board is ultimately the arbiter of which site plan we move forward with. So this is our preferred site plan. Again, this red dotted line shows the one-acre parcel that would be created for the proposed development, and then this shows the layout of what's proposed. You can see the building located on this plan. It's a two-story building with a full basement, and I have some graphics that I'll show you shortly with that showing what the building looks like. On this plan, the building meets all of the setback requirements except the setback to the east or to the bottom of this slide, where at its closest point, which is the southeast corner, it's eleven-point-two feet from the abutting property line, meets all of the other setbacks. This plan includes fifty-eight parking spaces, and if you go to the next slide, here's a rendered version of that preferred site plan. Again, this is the one that requires the variance. You can see as part of this application, there's a generous landscape plan that's also being proposed to green and beautify the site. This is the zoning compliant site plan. We're calling this the alternate site plan. I'll go through the reasons why shortly. This is not the preferred plan, but this plan does have the building meeting all of the setback requirements. It has fifty-six parking spaces, so it's two less parking spaces than the preferred plan that necessitates the variance. Switching to design and programming, and I'll be brief. So this has the floor plans of the first and second floor. The first floor is all the medical. The second plan is also medical, but if you look in the brown on sort of the upper-left corner, these are the two workforce housing units that are proposed within the facility. The footprint is about sixty-seven hundred square feet, second floor about sixty-five hundred square feet, so that the total sort of usable, occupiable space is about thirteen thousand three hundred and one square feet. There is a basement also proposed of about sixty-three hundred square feet, and if you go to the next slide, I think I have that. The basement is largely unfinished, and then the pink areas shown on the plan are going to be used for various mechanical storage. As part of this project, the Community Health Center is introducing a number of environmental and sustainable features in terms of energy usage. They're listed here, but the top graphic, the roof plan, you can see the solar panels that are proposed. It's also being designed to be LEED silver, sorry, silver certifiable. So it's an exciting plan in terms of low energy usage and minimizing its environmental impact. These are some views of the site plan. I'm not going to go into them into any huge detail. Greg is here if you have any questions. This would be the view from Route six A. Next. And then this is the view from the parking lot. All of the parking, as you'll see or as you saw in the site plan, is located to the side or behind the building. I would note that this project was reviewed yesterday by the Old Kings Highway Committee, and they have issued a certificate of appropriateness, finding it to be an appropriate design for Route six A. In terms of the permitting, so the project did go through rigorous review through the Cape Cod Commission and received a Development of Regional Impact approval in December. As I mentioned just a moment ago, yesterday, the Old Kings Highway approved both the demolition of the barn structure on the lot and the proposed construction. We're here tonight before the Board of Appeals. We are in the process, maybe we filed today or?
Tomorrow, Thursday.
Thursday, we're filing with the Conservation Commission. That was one of the comment letters. We are filing a request for determination of applicability because we have very little impact in the one-hundred-foot buffer to the wetlands and are anticipating a meeting on February fifth with the Conservation Commission. And then ultimately, we will need A and R endorsement from the planning board to create the lot. Okay, switching to zoning while we're here this evening. So the properties in the BL one zoning district, the purpose of which is laid out in the zoning bylaw, is listed on the screen. The uses, the health center use is allowed by right in this district, and the two apartments require a special permit, which is one of the special permits that we've requested. Dimensionally, the proposed lot will meet all of the dimensional requirements of the district. The building will meet all of the setbacks of the BL one district with the exception of, under the preferred plan, the variance that we're requesting from that one setback. The site complies with the vegetated condition requirement. About thirty-two percent of the site will be pervious and vegetated under proposed conditions. Parking is also one of the areas where we're requesting special permit relief and then a special permit for the amount of wastewater flow, and I'll walk through each of those individually in a minute. Okay, first, the variance. Again, here's the preferred site plan, so this is the plan that does require the variance. Generally, the BL one zoning district has no side yard setback requirements. There is an exception that's contained in one of the footnotes, however, of the dimensional table, which essentially says that if the building abuts a residential district or an existing residence, then there's a twenty-foot setback. Here, all of the abutting properties are within the same BL one commercial district. However, the property to the east, which you can sort of see on the bottom of the screen of this graphic, is currently, as we understand it, used as a residence. So that kicks in that requirement for the twenty-foot setback. As proposed, at its closest point, the project is proposed at eleven-point-two feet from that property line, so we're requesting a variance of about eight-point-eight feet from the setback. This slide shows the variance criteria. It's sort of reorganized in your zoning bylaw, but it's basically the same in the bylaw and under forty-eight, section ten, and there's, it's usually described as three prongs. So the first prong is that we need to demonstrate owing to unique circumstances relating to soil shape or topography. That's prong one. Prong two is that a literal enforcement, in other words, compliance with the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. And then the third prong is that desirable relief can be granted without substantial detriment or derogation, and we'll walk through each of those next slide. First, unique circumstances, prong one. We suggest that this site is, has two unique circumstances. One, it is irregularly shaped. If you look at the easterly property line, it does not connect to Route six A at a right angle. It actually angles in as it comes towards Route six A or towards the south and becomes more narrow along the property frontage. That's one of the reasons why the building is closer to that side yard setback. We've oriented the building, as you saw from the plans, to be parallel to Route six A, but then with that line coming in, the way the property is shaped, it affects its ability to comply with the setback requirements. Secondly, there are unique topographic conditions on the project site, which I mentioned previously. They are relatively extreme on six A, which again necessitates the shared curb cut, which pushes the building to the east or closer to the abutting property that has the residence. In addition, there's topography along the west side of the property, along the bank's property line, which again wants to push the building to the east. Otherwise, there's significantly more grading and retainage that's needed to comply with the setback, and the next slide, I'll walk through that. So here's the second prong, that literal enforcement is a substantial hardship. Again, because of the topography, a literal enforcement, which would mean compliance with the twenty-foot setback, would require the building to be shifted to the west towards the area where the topography is more extreme. This results in significant added cost, over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. If you compare the alternate plan and the preferred plan, on the alternate plan, the zoning compliant plan, you'll see along where the bank property line is, that design requires a hundred and forty-foot linear retaining wall along the property line. It also shifts the building closer, bless you, to the driveway, which requires installation of additional safety features, including additional building construction changes where the drive would come very close to the building, guardrails and bollards. There's also safety considerations associated with the parking layout with the alternate or the compliant plan. It pushes the proposed parking closer to an existing transformer that already exists on the site and requires additional measures to protect the parking from being too close to that transformer. So there's real safety considerations that we think weigh strongly in favor of the preferred plan or granting the variance. In addition, a literal enforcement would result in two less parking spaces, which although we think it will- we think it will continue to work, does have the potential to limit programming on the site. Next slide. So one of the areas where a lot of boards struggle is finding the hardship. And here, we suggest that case law supports the granting of the variance relief and the finding of hardship in this project. And just by way of example, I've cited two cases that upheld variances, finding hardship for dimensional relief, which I think are somewhat analogous. The first one is the Wolfman v. Board of Appeals of Brookline. In this case, the board and the court found that the added construction costs that would be associated with constructing a compliant building in that case were a hardship. And so in that case, actually not completely dissimilar to this, a 60-unit residential building was being constructed, and they needed a variance relief from the buffer zone requirements to a residence on an abutting property. And in that case, there was shape and soil and topography considerations where in order to construct a compliant building, they would have to build on a back part of the building further away from the buffer zone. And doing that, the court, the applicant argued and the court agreed that that would increase the foundation costs to construct a conforming building, and that therefore justified the variance. In the Furlong case, this was a variance to, for a marina was requesting a variance. They had a, an existing Quonset hut that they were using in the middle of their property for boat repair. They wanted to build a new boat repair facility in the back corner of their property, but that impeded into the setback requirements. The marina argued that the variance location was safer, even though it was in the setback because the forklifts could access it better than they could the existing location that complied with all of the requirements of the bylaw. This is kind of a case of first impression. It was a 2016 case. I've quoted a couple of passages from the court. It was really the question of whether a safety concern, which would be ameliorated by the grant of a variance qualifies as a hardship, and it hasn't been something that was extensively studied before. And the court did hold that where a variance diminishes the risk of existing harm or prevents a greater risk of harm that would result from compliance with the zoning ordinance, that type of hardship can merit a variance. Again, I think here we have both of those situations. We have a situation where the compliant plan will require additional grading and construction costs, and the compliant plan also is not as safe in terms of bringing the drive closer to the building and the parking closer to the building and also to the existing transformer. Next slide. Finally, the third prong, no substantial detriment or derogation. Here, the building is clustered towards Route 6A, not towards the residence. The purpose of setback is not to have crowding between two structures and to provide buffer space. Here, you can see, and I like this graphic because it shows where the, an aerial where the existing residence is to the bottom, but you can see that it's actually quite a long distance from the closest point of the building to the closest point of the house. It's about 83 feet, so that's a significant buffered setback. In addition, the plan, the preferred plan includes a retaining wall on that shared property line with fencing and vegetation to provide screening and privacy between the proposed development and the house. The next slide, I think we turn to the special permit. I can pause now and try and answer any questions the board may have on the variance, or I can flip into the three special permits, which will be a quicker presentation, I assure you.
Why don't we just go through the whole thing and then we'll get it done?
Sounds good. So three special permits that we're requesting. You can go to the next slide. So the first one is a special permit under 3431 of the bylaw, which is the onsite waste disposal special permit. Essentially, that provision provides that if you have sewage flows that exceed 110 gallons per day per 10,000 square feet of lot area, then you need a special permit. So here, based on the acreage of the proposed site by right, this property could be developed for 480 gallons per day. As proposed, the use will generate about 1,500 gallons per day. This section is obviously geared at water quality and ensuring that there's no impact to water quality, and that's something that this applicant feels very strongly with in terms of the design that's being proposed. So in, to treat the septic, the applicant is proposing installation of a nitrogen removal system, an IA system, that will treat the wastewater down to just 11 milligrams per liter of total effluent nitrogen. And just by way of comparison, a standard Title V septic system treats to 30, well, doesn't treat, it has a nitrogen load of 35 milligrams per liter total effluent. So the by right, you could have a house, a four-bedroom house with a standard septic system that would have a higher level of nitrogen than what's proposed with the IA system that is being proposed as part of this project. In addition, water quality is obviously something that the Regional Planning Agency, the Cape Cod Commission and their on-staff hydrologists look at. The commission's regional policy plan for our whole region has a site-wide nitrogen standard of less, five parts per million or less nitrogen. This project does comply with that, and if you've read the commission decision that we forwarded, there's a finding to that effect in the decision. In addition, just quickly going back, there are stormwater measures that are also proposed on the site, so there's a low-impact stormwater design that prevents adverse water quality impacts from stormwater and drainage, and that also was reviewed and approved by the Cape Cod Commission. The next special permit that we are requesting is pursuant to 25C, which is the, for the apartment units. This, as is well noted in your staff memo, this section actually was changed at town meeting in May of last year, but it essentially allows within this zoning district residential units by special permit from this board. Here, as you saw on the floor plans, we're proposing two units on the second floor. These are sort of studio-style apartments of about 320 square feet each. Currently, the applicant does rent apartments for some of its workforce in Mashpee, so these would be intended for workforce housing for, for the community health center. And as Karen mentioned, probably medical students, visiting interns, and entry-level staff are anticipated to live here. I would also note that having this mixed-use component is also consistent with the stated purposes of the BL-1 district as set forth in your bylaw, which I've cited here, which encourages mixed-use development. And then we'll ask special permit. So when looking at the parking schedule of the bylaw, there's really no sort of very clear analogous use for creating, figuring out the number of parking spaces. We used the one that, I think it's like accessory, industrial, retail, offices, and forgetting what the other, there's one other category. It wasn't quite analogous to the health center, but that's what we took as a starting point. So if you apply that ratio, which is one space per 200 square feet, to the first and second floor of medical, it would come up with a requirement for 61 spaces for the medical use, and then the two apartments, each under the bylaw, would require two parking spaces, so a total of four, bringing the total to 65 parking spaces under the bylaw. The preferred site plan that we submitted shows 58 parking spaces, so that one would, as part of that, request special permit relief for seven spaces. This board does have the authority to grant relief by special permit when there are circumstances that are demonstrated to show that that relief is appropriate, which we think is the case here. One comparison for you is the Mashpee Health Center, the community health center of Cape Cod owns and operates in Mashpee. It's much larger than this facility, but applying the square footage of that to the number of parking spaces on that site, there's a total of 218 square feet per parking space in Mashpee. If we did that same ratio here with the preferred site plan, it would be 229 square feet per space, so it's essentially the same with the proposed preferred site plan of 58 parking spaces, which makes us feel comfortable that the number of parking spaces that we're proposing is adequate for the usage. In addition, if you look at the ITE parking manual, the average peak parking demand for this clinic use is 3.67 spaces per 3,000. Again, if you apply that to the medical use on the first and second floor, and then you add in the four places, four parking spaces for the residential units, you get to a requirement of 49 parking spaces proposed. The preferred plan has 58. Again, we feel comfortable that that number will work well here. I would also note that in the community health center's experience, the, the staff and visiting interns that live in their units don't necessitate two cars. So if this were important, they could live with the condition that as part of the lease, only one car be on-site for the apartments, which would, you know, cut in half the parking needs for the residential uses. Next slide. In addition, and this is also included in the Cape Cod Commission, the health center will be implementing a transportation demand management plan to try to encourage carpooling and public transportation and therefore reduce trips to the site and reduce parking usage on the site. I'm going to ask Karen to talk just very briefly for a moment. They've had really seen a change with virtual visits and telehealth that has really decreased their parking since COVID, and so I'm just going to ask you to comment on that quickly because we think that's also a contributing factor to this.
Sure, Eliza. I'm not sure how much of a comment it needs. I'm sure everybody has the same experience with virtual visits in a post-COVID environment. We're seeing that approximately 60% of our medical or our behavioral health visits are virtual, so eliminating a significant transportation and parking need. About 25% certainly for our medical visits are done virtually. So we took a very conservative approach here in the 25% dental services are in person, but again, overall, about a 20% reduction, all services combined is what we've been seeing.
Ms. Karen? So if you apply that 25% to the parking calculation under the bylaw, which was the 65 spaces, it would equate to needing 49 onsite parking spaces, which is actually pretty consistent with what ITE is suggesting in their parking manual as well, again, making us feel comfortable that the parking spaces proposed are adequate for the use. Next slide. And then these are just some other benefits of the project. We think this is a really tremendous project. It's been very well researched to date. We hope you also look at it favorably in the requests that we're asking for. And I think I'll conclude and answer any questions or have our team members answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board?
Sure, I'll start. So the manual referred to for parking, is that just for patients or staff? Because I just see now you have 40 staff members there.
Do you want to talk about the staff? Sure, the staff, we, the, the site itself, the services that we provide will allow us to hire 40 new staff. That's not 40 concurrent staff working in the building at any one given point in time.
What would that number be approximately?
It'd probably be closer to 25 at any point in time. It depends on the shifts and the hours of operation, but generally, we're open eight to six, so there's two shifts that go on during that. And again, some of the workforce is remote as well, so just estimating it's at any one given point in time is probably about 25 people.
So does that manual we refer to is just for patients or is it staffing?
The ITE parking manual? No, so the, I, I don't know if you're familiar with the, there's an ITE trip generation manual, and then there's an ITE parking manual, and these are sort of national authorities on various land uses in terms of how much traffic will be generated and how much parking will be required for a site. And they go out and survey all different types of land uses and come up with these average ratios. So the number from the ITE manual would just be usage, staff, and, and the patients, yeah.
You're saying you're going to have 25, roughly 25 staff there at any given time during the day, which is essentially half the parking. And so you're looking at how many, 25 for your, your patients?
Yeah, again, I'd refer to our experience in Mashpee and how many of our employees take advantage of the alternative transportation, whether riding their bikes or the bus or any Uber. You know, it's a different workforce now, and we're seeing that some individuals at the entry level don't own cars, honestly, which is why we're trying to build workforce housing into all projects that we do these days. So I don't, again, applying the same standards of, as we've seen in Mashpee, there has been zero impact or shortage of parking, I should say.
Just to speak to the variance, it appears that the buffer line is drawn in so that the entire easterly elevation would be within the encroachment. Is that correct?
I think that is, right? Yeah. Like, the lot does angle out, but I think at the furthest point, you told me this is 14 or so?
Yeah, it's about 14 feet or so, yep, from the furthest point.
Do you know the approximate area of the encroachment as it relates to the size of the building?
The square footage of the building? I, I could find that out fairly quickly, but. I could try.
Big ones, just in case.
Give me a minute here. Yeah, I don't, I don't have the number, but we can give a rough estimate. Sure. Just going to look this up. Greg, what's the length of the building, you said?
20?
60. 40 feet. So it's 65. 10 feet.
The third jog is 10 foot five.
10 foot. So here we have 10, triangle 10 by 60, so 300 square feet.
Do you want me?
300 square feet, roughly.
Is that the line, should the setback?
Yes, Greg.
Do you want, if you'd like, the big plan shows the dotted line showing the setback through the building. Joe could approach and point that out. It's easier to see on the plan than on the screen.
No, I'm looking at the plan. So 13, roughly 300 out of about a 6,000-square foot footprint?
Does anyone have any concern over the hardship issue?
I mean, a variance is extraordinary relief, and generally, variance is ungranted if there's an alternate form of relief that's available. And I'm not saying necessarily that I would vote against it, but there's an alternate plan.
Well, that's my thought.
That allows for the construction of the same-sized building on the lot without the need for a variance. And that's troublesome to, to an extent.
I almost feel like it's self-inflicted, and we've run into that before. If you can do it, but you have to be here and it can be done, why would you go here when you need a variance?
Can I, can I comment on that, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I mean, I think you have to look at the language of the statute and the bylaw. It doesn't say, what it says is that a literal enforcement, so compliance results in a hardship. It doesn't say if you can build it, then you don't, you don't get a variance. You have to demonstrate there's a hardship. And I think we've done that, both in terms of there's safety considerations and also financial considerations. It's going to be over $125,000 additional to develop a compliant building on this site, and that's a substantial hardship.
Do you have a breakdown of how that was calculated?
Greg, do you want to comment on that?
What's the total cost of the building?
8.5 million is.
8.5 million, so you're talking, you know, $100,000 out of an 8.5 million-dollar billing being, you know, a substantial cost?
So I, again, I would look at the case law that I have referenced in the apartment case, which was a 60-unit apartment structure. The court upheld the hardship for an estimated additional cost of $250,000 to $500,000 for a much larger, bigger building, which I'm sure was a lot more expensive, and they found that that was what their, their. And they found that that was what their estimators had indicated would be the added cost of constructing a compliant building. And the court upheld that, said that was a financial hardship that justified granting a variance. So in the context of that versus what we're proposing here, again, I think they're analogous. I'd also point out too, I know there's lawyers on this board, but if you look at the Marshallein case, there is, courts have really held use variances and dimensional variances to different standards. A use variance is a much more stringent standard versus a dimensional variance like what we're proposing here. And also, I would say particularly, one of the criteria that boards think about in variances is how will this variance change the character of this neighborhood? And here, again, I would point back to your bylaw that it doesn't have a setback in this zoning district and all of the properties are within the same BL1 zoning district. It's just by virtue of the abutting property being 83 feet away used as a residence. So this isn't going to change the character of the zoning district because it allows zero setback in this very district.
There's a reason for the fact that they apply a setback when you're abutting a residential district.
And I don't disagree with you, except again, I would note that these buildings are going to be oriented so far away from each other that there's way more than a 20-foot setback between the buildings. It's 83.
Certainly, nothing else happens on the residential lot.
Right. Go ahead, Greg.
Well, I was going to say, it's not a residential district. There's still fat houses in the BL1 district. So, you know, we could not get this variance. And here from now, they could put a, come back to put a commercial building on.
And then there's no setback.
And then there is no setback. Also, just, you know, I know you said 125,000. I've worked for the community health center probably close to 20 years now. And 125,000 to a nonprofit, it's a lot of money. It goes to other, other things.
I'm not taking issue with that, but we sit here and deal with variances all the time and deny them all the time, you know? And it's a tough hurdle to get over if there's an alternate approach to the relief that's being sought. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
And I get it. I mean, there's a whole lot of case law that variance is to be sparingly granted. Like, you know, I acknowledge that. But I think this really is one of those situations, given the layout of the property, given the topography, and also the relief that's being requested, how it won't impact the neighborhood as a whole, given that, again, if that use were, the abutting property were to be used for residential purposes, there would be no need for this variance.
And is it an architectural reason why the building couldn't be shorter and wider as opposed to the way it is rectangular?
So we did look at that and essentially, given the setbacks for the septic system that needed, that's on the property as well as parking, it gave us issues with that.
What would have been the result of that design? How much wider would the building have been necessarily?
I want to say we're in the vicinity of about two feet maybe, just because, and again, it was a design. It wasn't, not just simply San Jose shape.
I understand, yeah, the interior has to work.
Right, the interior. So we had looked at alternate designs, and they just were not working.
Okay, helpful too, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to supply some cases and memo this question for you on the variance. If you feel like there's additional information that would be helpful on how this has been handled by the courts.
I, I understand there's case law, and case law, like as Kevin mentioned, we've, we've had many of these come before us. I'm just, personally, I'm not comfortable with the size of the variance you're requesting, nor the fact that you have an alternate site and you probably should have planned it to put it there to begin with.
Understood, but again, I would come back to what the statute says. And it says, you know, if the literal placement results in a hardship, a substantial hardship, i.e. costs more or is unsafe, then a variance can be granted. So it's not, if you can build it compliant, you don't qualify for a variance. That is not what the statute says or what the cases have interpreted.
No, I didn't say that.
I guess one other point I would make that it doesn't appear to me that the building's location has anything to do with the shape of the lot or the topography on the lot.
So.
If anything, that lot line starts to move away from the building the further you go in a northerly direction, I guess.
So the topography is such that it wouldn't be feasible to construct an access off of Route 6A. So we needed to use the shared access from the bank, which shifts the building closer to the easterly property line. Now, the compliant plan requires us to shift it back towards the bank where the topography is more extreme, which then necessitates construction of a retaining wall and a significant added cost to the project.
Does the, does the driveway have to be in that location?
Otherwise, it would interfere with the bank's parking. So yes, I think it would.
Yeah, if it shifts further north, the, all the bank's parking is lined up. It's hard to see, but you can kind of see where they.
I'm familiar with the size.
We really did look at a lot of alternatives to try to bring this into compliance. Came up with a plan that's compliant, but it's going to cost a lot more and be a less safe design, is our, is our view.
Unless you just reduce the size of the building by 10 feet.
Which, you know, again, more of a hardship, so.
Not even 10 feet. Basically, you'd be reducing the size of the building by, what, eight feet?
But I think that changes the internal layout of the.
The internal layout, we lost two program spaces.
We did look at that.
We did look at it. We tried not to have to do this.
Yeah, we really did.
And I would just say, we just, we don't necessarily have complete control over the design of the spaces. We're required to be licensed by the Department of Public Health, and there's certain design requirements there. And the Board of Pharmacy.
Is every building that you design, every building that you have on the Cape, the same size?
No, our Mashpee building, our Mashpee is the only other owned building, and that's 33,000 square feet. Born, we're, all of our other sites, we rent. The smallest, Centreville, for example, is just under 3,000 square feet, but it doesn't have the programming. All it has is primary care. So it just significantly reduces the amount of programming and the intent of the, this whole project.
Is this in a water overlay district?
It's a zone two.
So, so then there should be a plan for no disposal of toxic materials onsite and things of that nature? Because obviously, you're dealing with medical prescription drugs, things of that nature, some of which are toxic, and other things that happen within a facility, toxic. And those generally, you're not supposed to dispose of any of that stuff onsite. So what plan have you got in place not to dispose of any such materials onsite?
We're contracted with hazardous waste disposal companies, both for dental amalgam, for Sharps containers, all things that are traditionally medical.
And you have security systems in place to protect the prescription drugs and things of that nature?
Secured building.
They're not accessible to any Tom, Dick, or Harry, or Jane?
It's very strict guidelines from the Department of Pharmacy in the state.
I don't have anything further. I guess I'd like to look a little bit more at the plan, but I'm not sure it'd make much difference.
Could I just, just declare, other than the dumpster, the trash enclosure, is there anything else ground mounted? It looks like all the mechanicals are proposed to be on the roof.
The basement. Yeah, mechanicals are on the roof screened.
Nothing's outside.
Design, there is a generator in the west of the lot. Do you have a plan showed up? I think you have a plan showed up. Yeah, I can, do you want to, see? I can show you the site plan. But the generator is there, just, I guess it would be west of the building.
Plan west or?
Yeah, so, sorry, west, north is actually, sorry, north is to the bottom, yeah, so.
Okay.
Sorry, east.
Near the dumpster enclosure?
6A is on the south side. It's a little confusing. You're the dumpster.
Yeah, the plan seems to have a different.
That's screened? I know you meant this fence screened, okay.
Yep, generator and dumpster enclosure.
Explore the possibility of accessing the property through the Tupperware driveway that also services the bank as opposed to accessing the property up at 6A.
That's a, if you ever come up that road, that's a retaining, there'll be a retaining wall to park a lot. I don't know, probably about 6 or 7. Yeah, so we, we were, currently, we have a retaining wall on that north side. Yeah, because the plan is to retain some on the abutting side where the variance is being requested. So we'll be lower there, and then we'll be higher in the backside. So if you want, I can show you the grading plan.
There's no retaining wall there now, correct?
No.
But there's going to be a retaining wall regardless of what plan you go with?
Correct, there will be a retaining wall. There'll just be a more significant wall, a new wall on the west side that abuts the Cape Cod 5 parking spaces, just because the grade will be so much different between our parking and their parking, and we can't really obviously interfere, grade their parking lot. So we have to kind of put a wall right at the property line. It'll drop down maybe three or four feet to the, our proposed parking spaces because the whole, the whole site shifts to the, to the west.
Is there a need for the Cape Cod 5 to modify their special permit to allow for this driveway coming off their parking area?
No, that. All right, any other questions at the moment for the board? Comments?
I don't think so.
Any member of the public want to speak to this special permit or the variance? All right, what do you think we should do, gang? I don't think I'm ready to make a decision that they'd be happy with.
Yeah, I think regardless, we should probably leave it open so for the fifth.
So we get the fifth member?
I haven't been able to access the plan on my.
Okay.
My laptop, so I want to take a closer look at the plan.
All right, so you want to continue both of these to, what was that meeting after the following meeting?
It would be February 11th. The closest one is January 28th. You're hearing about 40B that night. So it's up to the board.
I think. I think we chatted earlier about that. I don't think, I think you'd rather go out to that first February meeting.
The only consideration, and I'll let Karen weigh in, we have a, as you heard, the health center received a very significant grant from the state, and we're excited to build here and spend that Commonwealth money in the town of Sandwich. And there are some deadlines with the grant, so I don't know if.
Technically, the building has to be fully constructed by December 2026.
I don't think two weeks is going to hurt you at this point, or four weeks.
Four weeks.
I'm sorry, but, you know.
It just doesn't allow us to move forward with construction drawings. And I totally understand, it's a big, it's a big decision, but it, it does, it equates more to.
You do have construction drawings for both? No?
Well, you have, you do obviously have your architectural drawings, no matter what plan you go with, right?
That's what I mean, what she's talking about is the next level of drawings. It costs a lot more money.
Right, okay.
You don't want to spend their money if the project's going.
All right, so.
So you're telling us that if you don't get the variance, that you're not going to move forward with the project?
No, we're not necessarily saying that. It's just a little concern about a month delay is all. But I, again, I totally understand, it's just an initial reaction for me.
I suppose, I suppose an issue, an issue becomes whether or not, whether or not you're more comfortable with the alternate plan if the board were to consider it tonight without the need for a variance, or wait four weeks to determine whether or not the board might be willing to accept the alternate plan.
I understand.
I mean, that's, that's a choice.
I understand.
And in four weeks, we'll have the other fifth member here.
Yeah, that would be great if we could have.
Just to help you.
Have a full board, yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, we don't want to rush your process and also be respectful of your agenda. I guess our ask is just, you know, we want to keep this moving as quickly as we can for these pressures that we have on the funding.
No, I understand.
Might I make a suggestion?
Sure.
We didn't get to any deliberations this evening. Excuse me, we won't. Might I recommend we have a virtual session next week to do the decisions, and we can reconvene at that time?
As long as Eric can listen to the tape before then.
Yeah, we would just need to continue to a time and date certain and location. So we would need to make sure now that we know when we will be able to host that meeting with everyone involved.
Will Eric sit on it if he's, this has got to tie into Town Water, right?
Yeah, that's never been a problem before. It's.
I spoke with him this morning. He was not planning to recuse himself from this issue.
So is that feasible for the board to have a virtual meeting next Tuesday at this time?
Next Tuesday, I have planning board. So I would not be able to, or Maureen would be able to attend a meeting. We could offer Monday or Wednesday.
Monday's a holiday.
I can't do Monday.
Oh, yeah, Monday's a holiday. Thursday.
Zoning board on Wednesday in Burnsville. Thursday?
No, I'm not around Thursday.
No, Friday.
Well, we tried.
Is there a meeting on the 20th?
There's a meeting on 20B.
We have the response from the 40B engineer, and that's going to be a very lengthy meeting. I am.
Yeah, sure.
Probably looking for a two-hour meeting, but just that application alone.
Thank you for these suggestions. We really appreciate it. If February 11th really is the best date, you know, we certainly would be happy to be continuing on that date. We appreciate you trying to find alternate ways, so.
All right, then I'll make a motion. We continue both applications until February 8th. I'm sorry, February 11th.
I'll second. All in favor?
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for your time. Excuse me for a minute.
My only conflict is Monday, personally. I'm available otherwise, other than Monday.
Are you available this week?
What's that?
Are you available this week? Could we do a Friday midday Zoom or morning or late afternoon or?
Probably a Friday, like mid-morning or something. Could you do that?
After, I would say any time after 10:00.
I can put out an email, because with taking it under advisement, we don't need to make the decision tonight. So I can try and schedule a Zoom either late this week or.
Do you have enough time for notice though? The notification for the meeting?
We would have to have 48 hours in advance. So tomorrow morning, if I can try and get something from Friday, that would be the earliest with the agenda being posted.
For a virtual, virtual meeting Friday?
I think so. I got some construction going on at the house, which has been a major problem.
Even better.
I can't get to my printer to print out my plans or anything, you know? Unless I get Maureen to print out all this, all this stuff for me so I have a hot copy.
And if anyone would like to Zoom from town offices, you're welcome to join us. Chris usually takes us up on that offer. We can meet in the conference room and Zoom whoever can make it.
Okay. So, all right, either Thursday or Friday. I mean, it doesn't, doesn't matter. I can do either morning, Thursday morning or Friday morning?
Thursday, I wouldn't have enough time to post an agenda unless I get it first for a thing tomorrow morning. Yeah, so either Friday, we're talking about the decisions and setting up a potential Zoom meeting where anyone who wants to join us in the offices can.
That's what I would do. I would join you, because my computer's all crazy.
I might have to do the same.
That's fine.
So we're looking at Friday, Friday morning? Mike Tench?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, we'll get these decisions done.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just one thing before you close. I just wanted to introduce my assistant, Ian Reed, to the board. Ian has been with us for about two years, and he's going to be attending some zoning board meetings moving forward.
I introduce myself. I've seen him around town.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Welcome. Thank you, welcome.
I'm confused. Eliza said that, that the 20-foot requirement was only in play because there was a house next to it, but I, I thought it's that there has to be a residential zone.
Or a resi, or a residence.
Residents.
It's in the footnote.
All right. Any, any other matters reasonably anticipated? I don't think so. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
No moves.
Second.